People know that Area 58 is filming us tonight and can be seen at a later time. And the first thing on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance, if you all will join me, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Slickman Roy will be running a little late, but she will be here. Okay, first thing on the agenda is...
I'm filling in for the court.
Minutes?
Doing double duty here.
Reverting to your past life, huh?
The approval of the agenda for October 11th, right?
Yep. I can't believe it's October 11th. Shh, the recorder's here, I can't say.
Do we need a motion today?
No. October 11th agenda, yeah. Unless you got something to add to the agenda.
I'm just gonna go ahead then and move to affirm approval of the following warrants and commitment. Payroll warrant number 29 for $356,225.35. Vendor warrant number 30 for $31,248.29. Withholding warrant number 31 for $136,695.31. School warrant number 32 for $258,368. Ambulance commitment number 9B for $37,288. Ambulance commitment 9C for $25,461.
I'll second those. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve the following warrant and commitment. Vendor warrant number 33 for $15,320.74. Mobile home park fee number 10 for $5,160.
I'll second that. No further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. I move to approve payment of the selectmen bills dated October 11th, 2016. I just need to find them. Alright. Matthew Bender and Company, $240.10. W.B. Mason, $102.89. Michael C. Gilman Esquire, $715. Deutsch Williams Brooks, $3,006.20. Beth Israel Deaconness Hospital, $400. Atlantic Broom Service, $1,501.44. American Arbitration Association, $275. And that's it.
I'll second those. No further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Charlie, I think this falls into you.
Sure, can you start off? We have two copies of the contract with the highway you need to sign.
Just nine years. I think that's fine. I'm sorry, go ahead Charlie.
If you could... The board had already ratified this previously, since obviously we've come to an agreement that the board does need to sign this. Then if you could just leave it for Kim to sign, that would be helpful. Similarly, we have one copy of the fire contract to sign also. If you need it for Kim to sign, that would be good. More signatures, we have the grant agreement for the $55,000 grant that I mentioned a few weeks ago for recycling. And I also mentioned this, Susan will just be putting this in the bank for the time being, she has the ability to plan this and how to use it for the town's recycling operations. In this case, the only person to sign would be the chair, so if the board would vote to authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the board.
So me, second. All in favor? Alright.
I wanted the board to be aware that Scott Claussen has filed suit against the town through the ZBA and Jennifer Short-Farman. This is to do with the various decisions the ZBA has made during the last several years regarding tarrowood kennels and various amendments to the special permits. During that time, I contacted our land use council, since this falls for the ZBA. And Deutsch Williams has assigned attorney Kim Salat, who I've worked with before, as the town's attorney on the case. At some point, there should be a discussion on how to proceed, but for the media purposes, she'll file an appearance for the town later this month. At some point, I think either we'll have a come-in for an executive session to discuss strategy, to obviously invite the ZBA in at the same time, but we don't have to do that immediately.
That was just you.
This is from the O'Callaghan Plant Council. They are doing their annual reorganization for the Metropolitan Planning Organization. And they're looking for anyone who's interested in serving from a town of under 14,000. So if one particular seat, not one per town, there's another committee for that that Troy's on. But if anybody's interested, they could, it has to be an elected, it has to be a member of the board's department who'd be interested.
What it does is anything that comes out from the feds or even the state, they have to have the town sign off on. O'Callaghan Plant Council using the money or if it's a charity, it passes through them. It's not a bad deal. I'm already on, so I can't serve.
Well, he's on a separate committee.
Separate committee, but I can't serve, I don't want to serve, I don't think about it.
If we need to do it, I can...
Well, no, I mean, in the sense of, as I mentioned, it's one person for all the towns.
All towns, also for other people. Oh, good. That's even better. Have enough commitments.
On cable, I think maybe you remember that Area 58 at one point mentioned they were gonna be putting in the installation of the cameras in the room, so they call it robotic installation, so they can control, for instance, from the back room. So they're gonna be coming in next month on the 17th and 18th of November to get that installation done.
Now, be sure that they put the camera in such a way that it only views everything to my left.
Okay.
So when we work upstairs, they're gonna have to still do that manually, right?
The fire department now has an easy pass account for all its vehicles. They've got transponders for each of the vehicles. Those are most of them would never use, I know, why would they be driving in...
I was just wondering, are we going to Somerville that far?
I guess there was a little miscommunication, but I think what happened is the fire chief just did it for a just in case situation in that he had run into a situ, I guess for a period of time municipal vehicles were exactly as fire police. Then this August, he got a bill from them for going through about having a transponder. Somebody at the state DOT said, well, all municipal vehicles are supposed to have one. Well, we figured out that's not the case, obviously, since it's unlikely we're gonna have, for instance, a highway truck going down there. But nevertheless, he's getting transponders for each of them. And of course, now with the new toll system, that it's just gonna read, there won't be booths or anything like that.
I guess they've been...
Encountered that, drove through, said, uh-oh, what was I doing?
Yeah, they've been, they said a lot of people have been going through without paying the fare, especially out-of-state individuals. But I can understand why the chief might get it, because they have gone to different ceremonies, training and things.
They've been straightened for you.
Yeah, right. But there's no cost to getting a transponder.
Oh, okay, that was gonna be my next question. If there's a cost involved, I'd have to question it.
Only if you actually go through the booths, sort of the equivalent with any one. If we have other municipal vehicles that need to get those, we can all just have one account and that will work out. I wanted the board to be aware. Holidays at Halifax, if you remember last year, they had a platform out front between the two wings of the building. They wanted to put another...
That's where the ice sculpture was?
Exactly.
And they wanted to do it in that same spot?
Yes.
And they're calling for colder weather, right?
That's what they're asking for.
That was tricky last year.
That will be, I believe, the ninth, it's whatever the second Saturday in December is.
Like my grandkids and daughters were asking when that was gonna happen.
The board of health has been having an ongoing discussion, that's called, field cell farms, about getting the necessary water testing results for their wells out on the field there. The board of health, this was not a subject of the consent agreement. However, there is a clause in the consent agreement that the town is supposed to work together on public safety and public health issues. Board of Health hasn't asked for any action to be taken, they're dealing with themselves, but again, I want the board to be aware. But there's some possible conflict going on there. Let's see, back to tarrowood kennels. We have a barking dog complaint from, I guess, three of the butters, including Mr. Claussen. The decision from the board didn't indicate, well, the board's decision a few weeks ago indicated that tarrowood kennels had to reduce the number of dogs. The kennel is still subject to the town's bylaws on nuisance dogs, including incessant barking. So we now have another complaint. Now this time it's in writing, which was an issue I believe we'll have to go around. The statute's clear that we have to investigate the complaint and hold a hearing about that. What I wanna do, though, is check with town council beforehand to see what actions the board can take. One of the problems being that the bylaws, not the bylaws, but the statute's written, so it's really meant for a dog rather than a kennel. And while the board could place stipulations or restrictions on tarrowood fire this complaint in the end, and there's a fine system if they don't comply, I wanna check, you know, I'll have... I know Kim, when she talked to me about this, felt the best it was for her to put on her investigator hat again and go back to monitoring the situation once more. And at some point, we will hold a hearing on this. But I want to check with council to see what options the board has if it decides to take some sort of action.
I think that's the best move.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
We have two resignations from the council aging of Sharon Hart.
Yeah, that's sad.
And Jory Marvo, both resigned. Both of them are affected. Amelia Sharon didn't mention any specific reason. Jory indicated that she was going to be working on generations and there's obviously a conflict of interest. Not that they don't work together, but it's not a good idea to have one person serving on both generations, board of council aging.
Lots watching the handouts.
So what I'll be doing is posting it, I'll get a press release, I'll post it on the LED sign as such, that we're looking for volunteers to serve on the council. The board wants to send letters out to the two...
I would love to send a letter to them thanking them for their service and, you know...
Yeah, absolutely.
Then let them know our regrets that they no longer are able to serve for the town.
Okay, we'll do that.
I'll certainly move that. Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Street opening permits, we have 301 River Street for gas service detail ops required. Work would be completed by November 1st. 159 River Street, again, gas service detail ops are getting work completed by 11:01. And then 56 Lincoln Street, gas service detail ops, complete work by 11:01. But the highway permits ask for the utility try shooting of the road first before cutting up Lincoln for the...
I don't think that's gonna work.
Well, they're asking.
That's just my opinion, I'm not an engineer, but I don't...
Well, they're asking, so if the board, the board could officially approve the free...
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Trash contract, this is an extension for this year, this is the 17, there's a small price increase due to inflation, it's 1.5%. For two copies, in this case, the entire board would sign if the board wants to agree to the amendment.
Is Ms. Johnson okay with that?
Yeah, she's one of David's.
I move that we sign the contracts for trash recycling, sorry.
I guess I'll second it. You have some questions, but I'll ask with recycling.
Anybody here to answer your question with recycling?
Well, I can, I was excited, but I can get Susan, I can get information from Susan, whatever the board needs.
Is this built into the contract? Is that, so we're obligated to do it?
No, we're not obligated, we're allowed to extend it.
My understanding was that the actual costs have gone down, that's why I was wondering why we were paying for increases.
I'm not aware of what we brought to cost down.
I was led to believe that when we contracted, we contracted at a relatively, at the time, a decent rate, but since then, the rates have come down, is what I was led to believe.
Well, I know that the tipping fees are going down, but unfortunately, our contract, the facility, where it's brought is a longer-term contract, I think it's 2020.
Okay, alright, so that's the difference.
Yeah. Once we get out of that one, we'll be, we'll probably have some competition for the place where the materials are called to. And we'll probably get a much better place once that happens.
Okay, that was my question, that's what my concern was.
And this is the...
It's the firefighter's contract. And then the 4745, we got two ambulance abatement requests. One is for August for $54,607.67. The second one is for September for $32,884.30.
We've done everything that's necessary to try to redeem it.
Yes.
Alright, I'll move them as such, the ambulance abatement number one for $54,607.67. And abatement for ambulance number two, $2,016.32,084.30.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Alright.
So you have 745, I believe?
Yes, we have one with Mr. Pisari. The good-looking guy in the rear of the room. Oh, well, he left already.
He left, yes.
How you doing, Dan?
Good.
What can we do you for it?
Well...
Are you gotten for punishment?
For punishment, that's what they asked me, is that true?
That was my first thought.
You've always been involved in things that's going wrong, you've always had a voice, so...
Excuse me?
You've always had a voice in matters going around the house.
Yeah, I guess.
What made you wanna go further with, join this committee?
I guess I have time now, you know, I'm on the granddad stage.
Less and I get personal now.
So just, I have time that I can do now. To be honest with you, it's something I've always, years ago, you mentioned to me I should get on the board, so I felt it was time, you know?
Your background?
Excuse me?
Your background?
My background?
Working background?
Well, right now, if I secure prototype machines, do you know what that is?
Yep.
Yeah, that type of thing. Quality control, nuclear power plants, industrial radiographer.
So you're saying you're qualified for this position?
No, I'm a licensed real estate person. I don't know, I've been actually doing my due diligence and studying and it's pretty involved.
I was just going to comment that I've known you for quite some time, in various types of things. And my first thought was, in short order, you would probably have mastered the zoning bylaws, 'cause you're that type of guy, and you're a very detail-oriented kinda guy. And the ZBA in particular requires a lot of attention to detail.
I've been going to meetings, sitting on the meetings, and I can sort of say...
There are some, there are some classes offered by citizen planners, too. I don't know how that fits into your schedule, but those are kinda useful. They really kinda give you a guide as to the scope of your involvement, the types of things that you can look at and which ways to look at them. This isn't gonna make any sense to anybody else that's gonna be going through it, but that would also be a helpful thing if you have availability for that kind of thing.
Yeah, I've already talked to Marion about that.
There, the cost is no cost to it?
Not to...
There's registration.
Well, there used, it used to be no cost, but there may be registration now.
But in the town, a couple of costs.
But it's a helpful, beneficial thing.
Right, and I've also been going, they also have a zoning guidebook that they put out, I've been actually going through that already. And yeah, no, I plan to do that, Marion's talking to me about all that.
Well beyond my scope, that's why you guys can talk. I know what a zone is, I know how to go into it.
Well, it gets involved in a lot of its interpretation. You have to have a little background in it, you have to at least, you know, read the bylaws and try to understand them. Nobody gets them all. And again, a lot of it's open to interpretation, so...
When does the term end, Pam?
It's going to end June 30, 2020.
I would move that we appoint Mr. Daniel Zari to the ZBA as an associate member to end 2020, June.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Thanks, Dan. You were told you're gonna go down and be sworn in.
I gotta be sworn in, I go tomorrow, right after, there's a waiting.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll make sure, why don't you sign this out right away, so I'll get this down tomorrow.
'Cause I'm actually gonna be up here this way tomorrow, so it'll be great.
Okay, yeah, I'll get down to Bobby tomorrow.
Alright.
Thank you.
Take care.
Over anxious.
Town bank forwarding, we got another one, this one was from Cory Merritt, 12 White Island Road. She's also interested at some point in serving on the ZBA or the planning board, and that's been sent to the rest of the boards.
Are you talking she or he?
I thought it was she, but, 'cause it's Cory, she or Ie, you know, not...
Ie, yeah, okay, alright. Usually boys is with the Y, right?
Yeah.
I say it both ways with the Y, but...
English language is a difficult language, boy.
Okay, Ms. or Mr. Merritt.
Thank you.
So the notice was sent out to the two boards that Cory is interested in. I have some unfortunate paperwork that must get done regarding the civil service list.
Okay.
So if the board were authorized, it should sign the notice on hand.
So move, second. All in favor?
Alright.
Let's see, um, got that.
Is there only one talking here?
Yes. The other, we did get, the ZBA forwarded a note to us from Jennifer Cho, saying, asking that Mrs. took the ZBA, basically, out to the board, but she wrote to the ZBA asking that the, her application for an increase, or for the special permit to increase the number of dogs permitted on the property be withdrawn. So I'm sure the ZBA will honor that request. Not necessarily in all the issues regarding the property, but that particular series of hearings would end. And, let's see, just a couple of notes here. One is, there's a retirement reception next week on the 19th, where Susan Scott, who's the outgoing reference librarian, that's gonna be from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM.
How long has Susan been there?
I do not know, but it's been a number of years.
Pam, I'd like to know how long.
Also, well, the board had, thankfully, it's to the voluntary policy regarding fragrances. I wanted to, having worked that through with the employees at Town Hall, we made a couple adjustments to our situations, for instance, in bathrooms, that we could get a public notice out. Again, it's all voluntary to the public, asking that they refrain from wearing fragrances and such. Because, situation being that for our employees who are affected, they'll never know when they're gonna encounter, whether it's gonna be in their own office or in the hallway or something like that. Again, it's a voluntary policy, there's no fragrance police or anything like that. I just wanna get the word out, asking people if they could refrain from doing so if they're visiting Town Hall.
Does that complete everything I have on your floor?
I believe so. Aside from the recycling of abates. I don't know how many Pam has for you tonight.
Did you touch on the health, health insurance, or did I miss that?
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have anything more to talk to you about, I'm just, I have some concerns, and I'm going to another meeting Thursday about it, so... The only other things, I don't know whether the, in terms of scheduling, I know from past experience that most, say, election days, the board has, when it's been on a selectmen's meeting night, the boards decide not to meet.
I would much rather not to meet that day, I think it's gonna be... It's sort of like the end of a long road, and you know, you wanna sort of celebrate, but at the same time, it's gonna be a lot...
It's gonna be a long day.
Yeah, it's gonna be a very long day.
If the board doesn't wanna meet on the 8th...
Tam?
Then, I don't know if the board has any preferences between meeting the 1st or the 15th, because if we don't meet then, we'll have just probably one meeting on the 22nd. Given the number of things that are going on, I think it's preferable that we at least have two meetings in November.
I'm, I think I'll be back on the 15th, I'm not sure.
So there are only two days for the 14th and the 15th?
No, the 1st and the 15th, yes.
First is probably safer for me, but I'll have to check. I booked this so long ago, I can't remember what day it is I'm supposed to leave.
Well, you all have one, another meeting on the 25th, and you can make a decision on it.
I'm not concerned on the day you're gonna leave, I wanna be concerned the day you're coming back.
Yeah. Well, I wanna, that's what I'm trying to, if I knew which day I was leaving, I could tell you which day I was coming.
And the other reason is simply with the two meetings in December, we would be on the 13th, but traditionally, we haven't, if the date falls between Christmas and New Year's, we haven't met on that day, and that's when, meeting on the 27th, so again, with the number...
Shall we try for the 1st?
Well, again, I think I want, we should check with Tom.
Yeah, I, the 1st is good, I know I'm good the 1st.
Well, let's do that.
Okay.
If the next time we meet, we'll be, what, the 20th?
22nd.
22nd. Date for Thanksgiving?
Couple days, yeah.
If something comes up, we can always...
And then the only other thing would be for the meeting on the 22nd. I know, I know, sometimes we've had some hurt feelings one way or the other about having a budget meeting, either we go to see the finance committee, talk what they have, while they come off the bus. I have to show up at either of them anyway, so it doesn't matter to me.
Either way, I don't care. As long as we meet and discuss...
Well, why we do, why we do what the finance committee means, 'cause then we'll have as much time as we need to just do that. Whereas we don't know what else we're gonna have on the agenda.
Yeah, right, that makes sense.
Okay, so, I'll tell them that we, that they should expect us.
Oh, I don't know, is it a good idea to give them a warning, or?
So, we wanted to go to the individuals, to my individuals, recycling of abates requests.
Okay, so, um... They all have letters stating that they have...
How many do we have there?
I think it was 16 altogether, they're all...
And they all have, I went through all of them.
I did, too.
And I would move that we go yes to leave the abatements.
Can you, do we have the list on the agenda, or we have a list someplace?
They have them in piles, so they can just say, they're all in order.
Do you want the bill numbers?
Yes.
Move to abate bill number 19.
102.
It's 2,005.
Yeah, mine's 2,005, yeah. It might be out of board. Bill 531. Bill 1105. 304. 1875. 598. And then we got...
Then I decided to hold this instead of wasting paper, so you can say each number, 19...
Okay, 1918.
Yeah.
1459. 2589. 1115. 367. 257.
Do this, are we?
690. 2613. And 2208.
I'll second those. Any further discussion?
We looked at them.
All in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
In connection with all the abates, you know, Susan Johnson is looking possibly to work with the board health about setting up some stronger regulations concerning haulers here in Halifax. I gave her a set of regs from, if, it doesn't prevent anybody from doing private hauling, or I think it just stipulates getting more information from them to make sure they're doing everything on the up and up.
Yeah, that's been my concern, regardless of what they're telling us here, what's actually happening in the field. And, you know, when it's stating that services are available, that doesn't necessarily mean that services are being used.
What's the speed limit on the highway, how many people drive?
So, um, I don't know if the Board feels it's close enough to eight o'clock, I don't know if everybody's here, that was going to be here.
Is everybody here for the dog hearing, Abby's roses?
Yep.
Are, are you Abby or Rose?
No, that's my dog.
Oh, yeah, that's why I'm saying it.
Good Abby.
My mistake, didn't mean any harm.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody that's gonna be involved in making statements, please rise and speak for it.
And give Pam your name, just give her a minute to, to get everything down.
Will you be speaking? Yeah, you should, no, you don't. Raise the other right hand.
Tracy, no. Tracy, yeah.
What?
Your name, sir?
Christopher.
Chris?
Watson.
Watson, okay. Okay, um, are you gonna stand up or go?
I don't, I don't know.
You too. Okay, in your name, it's Lisa Watson, okay.
Gets one.
And just because you stand up doesn't mean you actually have to say anything, we're just calling.
Just raise your right hand. Please, we're dropping the truth, go to the drop of the truth, then we'll proceed to the selected.
Yes.
Okay, I have a seat. And first, there's something I'd like to stop with, it would be my animal control officer, the brilliant one.
Basically, what we had was a neighbor was walking a dog on leash in front of her home. This is Watson's dog, this is Watson's dog, uh, broke through an electric fence or the battery was dead. And a, a stuffle or an interaction took place at that time. There was an injury to the tongue of the neighbor's dog. Uh, we don't know whether it would have bit its tongue.
Yeah, that's an unusual wound.
Yeah, it is, well, you know, if they, they're, they're excited or something, they could have bit their own tongue. There was no vet.
Trying to talk and, talk and walk, stick your tongue out at the same time.
Right, exactly, so, I mean, my only concern here is the electric fences that can fail. Whether it be the battery in the car and, and, and I think we have to reassure the neighbors that everybody's gonna be safe when they're walking up and down, that's my concern.
And you're the owner of Teddy? Were there any medical bills, anything incurred, you know, because of the incident, or was there?
Not that I'm aware of. I looked at the dog that had an injury to the tongue, and again, I'm not totally convinced the animal actually bit the dog. Again, I agree that I think the dog bit its own tongue, I think is what happened. And the dog, I quarantined both dogs as precaution, because I mean, you just really don't know. But, you know, the animals were current on our vaccinations and no licensing. I went to the house and looked at the, their dog, which, you know, the one had gotten loose.
May I ask my question, what's your relationship with the neighbors, I mean, is there any animosity or anything on that?
No, I don't, I don't really, I don't wanna just say hi, or.
Well, that's, that's a start.
Yeah, no, yeah, I mean, I mean.
I mean, I've spoken to her in the past, and I haven't.
I, I, I asked this question, you forgive me, because, you know, I, I've, I've been here too long to know that sometimes it's not the dogs that are at fault. You know, always say there's the people here, it's not dog here, it's, it changes, so. Tom?
I, I was just gonna ask, did, correct me if I'm wrong, did I read that we'd had an incident prior, or? A dog getting loose or something, or did I misread that?
This dog.
Okay, that was the other dog.
That was one of ten, ten some, sorry.
That was my, I used to have a miniature pet, she was on a Christmas dinner, which was really deep down in theory. And, uh, if, he was quick, if you opened the door, he would.
He's out.
Shut up. So, yeah, we.
Well, I don't even say thank you, we just.
Yeah, I mean, that was, that was six years ago. I mean, we've had Abby for four years now, and we've never had a problem.
No other incidents?
We've never had a problem with the, the, the collar, I mean, the battery died, I mean.
Have you corrected the situation now? Does the fence now effective, is working?
Um, we've also had her tied up on a chain when she used to break them, she'd break them with this one.
How big a dog is this?
She's, she's a strong dog. I mean, put it this way, the little dog, because I was outside when it happened, and I grabbed her immediately, because usually she's outside with somebody. I grabbed her immediately, me and my dog got ahold of her. If, if Abby really wanted to hurt the dog, she, she could have killed it, I mean, it took.
How much does the dog weigh?
Probably weighs around sixty-five pounds, and she's all muscle. But I mean, we also have a little Pomeranian and Chihuahua, and, you know, she gets along with them fine, you know, I mean, she gets along with other animals. Mary was actually, had her dog on a leash and she was swinging it around, and I was like, oh my gosh. You know, I, I was more worried about the dog being swung around, if she just stayed still, that nothing would have happened, you know, they would have just smelled each other, you know what I mean?
So, so at this point in time, you're never sure what's gonna go on. And you're saying that all the rabies shots and everything else is up to date?
And my only concern is a possible, not a failure, you know, what do we have as backup? Because I do not trust.
Well, he stated that, that he hooks the dog up, so. One of the, one of the conditions we may be, if no one's gonna be outside with the dog, just to make sure he's not going places.
Well, that's what we've been doing, what we've been doing since, you know, the incident and stuff. What I try and do now is just keep her in the house all the time, and then let her out at night, you know, early in the morning, let her out at night. And if we're outside with her, then we let her out with us, you know, we take her outside with us.
Tom, Tom, what's your feeling?
I, I, I was just gonna, I think when I heard from the animal control officer was a recommendation that we're not relying on the fence, is that what I'm hearing?
If they, they, they tethered the dog while it's outside by itself, that's fine. Um, if they're out with it and they can keep a good eye on it, I, I feel more comfortable for the neighbors and, and for your dog also. Just for a safety, safety issue, public safety, that was my biggest concern to bring it to the Board.
So at this point in time, my recommendation would be that we, we do intend to send you a letter stating in fact what we've just talked about now, about the dog and chain, and that we do have a leash law in town and the dogs should be under control at all times. I mean, change is, that's true from anybody in town. It, I see no reason to go any further in as much as.
I have another neighbor that uses, excuse me, I have another neighbor that uses an electric fence, I mean, I mean, if they need to keep that.
Yeah, excuse me, but we're not talking about the other neighbor right now. Okay, nothing personal, because if we're talking about this particular incident, if the neighbor is a problem, we'll have to deal with that too. Okay, hopefully, once you put the battery in, you won't, this won't reoccur, you just have to maintain the schedule. Maybe pull on your calendar, check the battery on the.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that.
Okay. Um, Tom?
I think that said it all.
So basically, what we're doing is we will be sending a letter to them stating that we do have a leash law in town, that the dogs should be under control at all times, and that if the dog is out by itself, that it should be on run or lead, whatever. Okay, did you think further?
No. No, thank you.
If we're out with the dog, then she can be on the invisible fence, but if she's out there.
As long as no one's there, if you feel you have that much control over the dog, but if something should occur again, then we'd be talking a different story.
Okay.
Okay? All right, thank you for your time, and I'm glad you guys get along with each other. All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
And, and I, if you start to talk with a list, bark with a list, then you know you gotta look at it.
What else we have? That's it? You can adjourn?
We're gonna have to sign these, but you guys can adjourn, I can sign all these.
All right, move to adjourn.
Okay, you move to adjourn.
Any further discussion, anything to be brought before the public at this time? Then I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks for your efficiency, Charlie.
I'm sorry, what's your name again?
I'm letting you go home early.